I'm going to go ahead and call them me in your order. This is the study session. We're only one topic tonight. Discussion regarding the proposed fiscal year 2020 City of Norman budget and capital budget follow-up. Jane's going to walk us through this. And just you guys get me tonight because the mayor has a previous commitment, she needs to leave a little bit earlier, so.
He just wanted to be down at our end of the table.
Yeah, it's on my end of the table.
I figured we were going to throw anything. She'd rather you throw stuff at me than her, so I figured that would probably be better.
Good evening, council. I'm going to go over the amendments that we have for the capital budget. Today is the 21st. We've got the. In May, the CDBG block plant fund was approved by council. And we have the original town site street improvements at $185,000, the CDBG target area preplanting project at $50,000, and then the CDBG land acquisition at $100,000. For public safety sales tax, the PSSD bond debt service will be reassigned from the capital fund to PSSD in the amount of 2.3 million. The capital fund will reassign $807,000 to PSSD fund to purchase capital equipment. And then the capital fund will show a transfer of $313,000 to PSSD, which will show a positive fund balance for FYE 20.
How much? How positive is that balance?
Zero.
Okay.
Pretty positive.
Zero is not a positive. I just want to make sure we would.
One dollar more.
That's right. I thought we were balancing it out.
Continuing on any amendments that we're looking at for the preliminary budget for FYE 20, the Flood Avenue multimodal path at $150,000, that was removed because it was included in the Norman Forward, so that was taken out. Then the Street Division North Base facility at $500,000, that was postponed to FYE 22, pending the results of the North Base campus study. And then the Thunderbird TMDL, the $300,000 was postponed out to FYE 21. Of course, that's the ongoing program, but they're just bumping out that $300,000 for one year. For, again, the amendments are, for Public Works, there was a 612,000 capital outlay added for trucks. And then the following programs or projects here have been postponed. So we have the three sidewalk projects at Flood, Mickey, and Klassen. We also have the 36th Avenue Northwest and Tecumseh Road at $100,000. Flood Avenue and Venture Drive, $80,000. Rock Creek, which would be 12th Avenue Northwest over to Trailwood, and then Rock Creek, Grand View to 36. Those were both postponed. And we also had the $2 million, 2012 bond expenses for Tecumseh to Indian, I'm sorry, 36th Avenue Tecumseh to Indian Hills for that road widening. That was also postponed. So for the revised numbers, we have the estimated beginning fund balance at $20,793, estimated new revenue at $34,375, proposed expenditures amount to $32,790. Of course, the 7% general contingency reserve at $948,000, the senior center reserve at $261,000. We have the reserve for the bond projects at $15,961. Now for the estimated pay-go for the new projects would be 5.2 million, which brings us to an ending fund balance of $22,378,695. Staff surveyed the department heads just to get an idea, not set in stone, obviously, but just to have some ideas here for you tonight to find out what the top two requests would be for each department. As you see here, you know, starting with IT, if you remember, they had on their request the city file system hardware replacement, and that was $400,000, so we included that. Parks Department, the Little Axe Sports Complex at $150,000, and then also the 12th Avenue, which would be the pickleball, the pickleball courts. The Fire Department, I talked to chief today, the, so fire stations one, two, and four, the overhead doors need to be replaced, and that's $34,200. And then the fire station four rehab or remodel, which is $17,000. Again, the discussion back on the animal welfare HVAC system at $250,000, and then the window replacement for the SIS building comes in at $5,000. Public Works Department has the I-35 corridor study phase two at $300,000, and then they have the Streets, Street Division, Lindsay Yard, Grindmaker at $300,000. And again, these were just their top two out of the list that you guys had seen previously. And then continuing on for Norman Forward, just to highlight, we've got the senior citizens' center. So FYE 19 would be the $760,000, FYE 20 would be the $3.4 million. And then there's the annual $80,000 for the Griffin land acquisition. I have to share with the updates and the amendments for council.
Councilmember.
So with the new projects proposed for funding in FYE 20, do we have the funding for these? Can we just, you know, be Santa Claus and grant everyone's wishes, or are these just FYI?
These are their requests. So depending on how you guys want to move forward, if you want to hang on to these funds for a little bit, determine where you want to spend them. But if there's anything that you felt on that list that would be worthy of moving forward now, then you guys could make those amendments.
So we basically, we have $5.2, we have $5.2 million of additional projects, and so these are some of the potential projects the staff is bringing forward. Don't add up to $5.2 million, but we want to kind of get an idea of what staff is looking at and stuff like this. Mayor Miller, you got a question?
So you're saying it was already in the budgeted amount of money?
No. After, I think, where did $5.2 million come from? I guess since our last meeting. That might help clarify.
Are you talking about the estimated pay as you go?
Yeah, new projects on the pay-as-you-go.
The biggest change were those projects that got moved out because the federal matching funds weren't available. So several million dollars worth of projects were included in the fiscal year 20 budget before that change to the ACOG transportation improvement plan. Moving those projects out in the future years made available funds in this fiscal year.
So we do have money for this.
I just want to make that clear that we didn't just magically find $5 million. It's a function of the ACOG funding dilemma that we talked about at the last meeting when they go through there. One thing I did not see on here, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was just going to say, I think with my really, really, really quick math, the new projects come out to about 1.4 million and change, and the difference between our beginning fund balance and our ending fund balance is about 1.6-ish million. So even adding all these projects would not be drawing down our fund balance if my math is correct. Does that sound about right?
That sounds right.
Okay.
Well, and that would not touch the 5.2 million.
Right, right. That's, I mean, just looking at, just the increase in the fund balance, even with that 5.2 million in there, we still don't, we're still not drawing down the fund balance even if we wanted to play Santa Claus and fund all of these, so.
Okay. Well, I want to lobby for my project, and I think Council Scott will agree with me on this one. One of the reasons why we have this money is because of the Robinson Street ACOG funding and stuff like this, and we lost our sidewalks, about half a million dollars in sidewalks there. That's about $4.5 million for the Robinson Street intersection, the Crossroads Boulevard, and about half a million dollars for the two projects that we talked about that got bumped down at this. So that's about $5 million, and basically this is 5.2. In the last bond project that the citizens voted on, we moved three or four of those projects to the very front, so we 100% city financing, so we didn't do any federal funding that allowed us to do them quicker. If we take that same approach with this, I'd like to propose that we take four and a half million dollars of this 5.2 million and put that in for the Robinson Street deal and keep our timetable that we've kind of told the citizens, hey, we're going to start this next year, we've got the design done, and so I guess maybe, Sean, can you tell me if that works or doesn't work, or?
Sure. Second. We just indicated that what happened was the federal funding wasn't received for this fiscal federal year, which is federal 20, which began October 1st. We believe that Robinson I-35 project, the sidewalk projects for the path projects, and actually 36 Avenue Northwest will make the cut next year, so FYE 21, October 1st, 2020, that that funding, four and a half million for Robinson I-35 and about half a million for the path, will make the cut next year. But we didn't lose it, we just postponed by a year. What I understand you're saying is you'd like to put the four and a half million that would be federal funds in a, kind of lock it up in the capital until we know that we're going to make the cut next year.
Right.
You think we'll know that? We'll certainly know a lot about the ranking and rating process midsummer this year, July-ish. We'll have a pretty good idea how those projects are going to do next year, and then at that point, council could decide to take that four and a half million and move it to other projects or add any number of projects. The key there is it's a shame to give up the opportunity for federal funding for a project when those capital dollars are so hard to come by. We'd much rather see you use those capital dollars for things that we don't have alternate resources for. We do believe we have alternate resources for Robinson I-35 just a year later than we had hoped.
But if we earmarked it for this, because we have to make the decision by June 30th, they don't make their decision in July, August, and it's a kind of, it's kind of a timing difference as far as our commitment to it, probably, but it keeps us on schedule as far as the bidding, the letting process, and engineering and stuff like this. And if we do get the federal funding, like we anticipate, then that frees up that money so July or August of next year, the council can say, hey, you got four and a half million dollars and revisit the budget and look at what other projects pop up at that time, but it also kind of shows our commitment that if the federal funding falls through again, instead of waiting two years for this critical deal and waiting another two years for our sidewalk projects, I think we were planning on spending this, having to get the funding there, so I think Councilmember Berman had your question.
Sean, I just had a question about kind of the, kind of some of the details of that. If we put all of this money aside, when would we be able to start the Robinson Crossing project, and when would those funds have to be delivered to our contractors? And then are those reimbursable funds if we get the federal funds? Or if we dish out $2 million just to get us started, are we then going to be SOL for that $2 million because we didn't want to wait and we wanted to pay that out? I mean, I understand putting the money aside to make sure that it happens, but I don't want to think that we're just putting the money aside kind of as a placeholder and then find out many more months down the road that we've then lost out on half of that because we had to pay half of it just to get the project started, and then we can't be reimbursed that money.
Great question. It is not a reimbursable program. So what I understand you're discussing here is just setting aside, in case we don't get the federal funding next year, you would use that local funding, the four and a half million in capital dollars to build a project here with 100% local fund, well, 90% local, 10% TIP funds or whatever, however that comes out. But that you wouldn't spend those dollars until we know how the project is going to rank in the federal funding formula.
And that we would not find out this summer. That we would.
Yes.
We will have a pretty good idea, and that's, you're correct, we'll have a pretty good idea. Let me back up. I'm probably making this more complicated than I need to. But you know what happened was that with this year's cycle, the ranking and rating process got filled up, and long story short, the city got all the money for sidewalks. ACOG has agreed that that was a mistake, that the ranking process is flawed. This summer, they're committing to fixing the flaws by around mid-July as a committee, the mayors, whoever serves on the ITPC will be voting on that, I think around July, maybe August. So once that formula is changed, we'll know, we'll know as a staff how well that Robinson I-35 project is going to do six months later in the formal process. No guarantees, but we'll have a pretty good confidence that we're going to get those four and a half million in federal funds next year. At that point, council or the finance committee can be discussing what you do with the four and a half million for other projects or not, or just sit on it for six months until you're sure about that. But it gives you that option of going in that direction.
But so just to, just to be clear, that still means waiting a year to start the project. That if we wanted to start earlier than a year from now, or whenever we get the ACOG funds, we would have to use that four and a half million dollars, or at least a good chunk of it in order to actually get it started earlier.
That's right. We had hoped to be starting the project fall of this year. We will instead be starting in fall of 2020 with federal funds, we hope.
I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on what that timing actually meant.
But if that funding fell through, you know, we'd be looking at 21, 22, so we'd be the second, we'd be in the next cycle, and that's what I kind of wanted to, I didn't want to put stuff two years.
Right.
I was okay for waiting a year.
And we are advancing all of the, you know, the design utilities. We'll be ready late this year, early spring for sure to get the project started if you want to do that. But my understanding is you want to kind of put this aside, wait until you know that the federal funding is coming through, and then make additional decisions about the four and a half million.
Okay.
So you would effectively have a, have a balance, either you put it aside for this project or a four and a half million dollar fund balance in the capital fund until you decide to pull the trigger on that decision.
Councilmember Scott.
And so I'm uncomfortable waiting to hear on ACOG's process because, to be honest, we got screwed on this one. And so we had, we were pretty confident that we were going to get funding, you know, until we saw, I guess you guys knew before we did, but, you know, we were confident we were going to get funding, we were planning on starting on Robinson later this year and then moving it back. And so I'm more comfortable getting started on it as soon as possible and doing what we need to do to do that, because to be honest, I know we're going to know more about their process this summer, but I, at this point, don't really trust them changing the process again in our favor, if that makes sense. So whatever we need to do to get started on this sooner, and then maybe removing the project altogether if we can not rely on ACOG and federal funding.
Okay, Councilman Holman.
That's what I was wondering, is the proposal to just forego federal funding completely and do it as a local project because we want to do it now? And if we did that, what does that free up next year in ACOG funding another project we might be able to get funded with federal funds instead?
Yeah, great question, again.
We won't lose the money. We won't, the four and a half million dollars would go towards another project.
We've got plenty of things in the pipeline.
I mean, I'm not opposed to using existing city funds to get that project done if that's what you guys think, if you guys think that needs to be done. I was just wondering what that meant, though. I'd have some concern about saving it, but if we want to use it and go ahead and do the project now.
Well, the idea was just kind of earmark it for that, and then once we realize whether we have it or not.
But if you're saying even if we do that, we still have to wait a year to start, are we just talking about using our existing money to go ahead and do the project?
That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about spending our money on this project.
To do it now.
And then we don't have to worry about it being on a list that ACOG gets to decide whether or not it deserves funding.
And then we could move another project under, Councilmember.
So I got two questions for you, Sean. If we were to spend the money, and as I understand, Robert's proposing out of the estimated pay-go of the balance of the 5.2 million, if we were to go ahead and spend that money on these projects that didn't get ACOG funding, how would that affect us on those pay-go projects on a go-forward basis, if at all? Is a lion's share of those monies going towards those, those projects we're discussing and funding that we're not getting, that we didn't get the federal funds for?
So, yeah, to Councilman Holman's question as well, there's plenty of projects in the queue.
Yeah. Well, that was my second point.
At the end of that, just to kind of throw some examples out for you, the next two highest priority projects would be 36th Avenue Northwest, the Bond Project Phase 1, and then James Garner Avenue Phase 2. Those are the two next projects in the queue. And they would rank well, and yes, you would just move those forward and do the Robinson I-35 locally.
I mean, I guess from my perspective, and I learned a lot from Stephen and from staff going through this transportation bond discussion that we did last summer and fall, and that's part of, I think, why we all felt comfortable with the blended approach, it was the first time we'd ever done it, is if I remember the queue of federal projects, I mean, it's long, and it's just got a lot longer with those 2019 bond passing. And considering we have three, but I will consider really important, significant road projects still in the queue from, you know, the 2012 and the James Garner project that, you know, are critical, you know, drivers, if you will, to some of the 2019 bond work. You know, Northwest 36th Street is also important as it connects to some of the other road projects up there. James Garner is important because it connects to the 2019 bond project down here. I just, like I, kind of like what I said that night about my sidewalk projects, I just get worried that, you know, one hiccup like this really has such a rippling effect on so many millions and millions and millions of dollars of projects that, you know, if we relatively, you know, have the, you know, relatively speaking, have the money without any major, you know, pain, you know, I lean towards, let's go ahead and fund these things locally. I, to me, my sidewalk projects are really important, they connect, they're major roadways, they're not neighborhood streets, they're Klassen, Flood Boulevard. I challenge all of y'all to go to Flood Boulevard from Main Street to Acre Street, there are no sidewalks in most, all of those blocks, it's a very unsafe area. And, you know, I run, and I don't even run down that street anymore because there aren't sidewalks to run on. If you're in a wheelchair, you certainly can't go down that street, and that's, Acres is the major connector to our new Central Library, at least from Acres north on Rob, I mean, on Flood, there are sidewalks, albeit not great, there are some. So I'm advocating for those because they're not neighborhood projects, they're on major roadways that are connectors, and we've tried twice now to get funding for those and have not gotten it both times. And I, so I feel like those are really important community, while they are in war for, they're important community sidewalk projects, and I know that Robinson Street Crossing is really important. So I would be comfortable going ahead and not just setting the money aside in the log box, but saying, let's just fund them locally, take it off the list so that staff can then focus on the other projects, you know, that are, the immediate next ones up in the queue, because maybe we'll get lucky and get back to where we got 10, 11, 12 million dollars a year. But my recollection that we estimated a pretty high number on average per year of federal dollars to stay on our program schedule for even the 2019 bond, and this one wrinkle right here on, you know, right, you know, on year one could put off the schedule all of our 2019 projects because we left one in the queue that we didn't think we were going to have in the queue from the 2012 bond. And I just worry about the continued rippling effect that it could have down the road with so much work to be done. Mayor Miller.
We have plenty of projects, TIP projects lined up, ready to go. So it's not a matter of, wouldn't it be great to free up $4 million for a federal project with the money? Because we've already got that. So on that end, it feels like no pain. I'm just wondering, though, when we chose to go for a bond issue where we had more pay as you go, pay for our own projects, when you go for that, you are giving up the opportunity to get more federal money. We've managed to do what we've done because we've gotten so much federal money. Now we're talking about, and I'm just, I'm just saying this because I can see a road us going down so that we get the things done we really want to get done. But we are going to be taking four and a half million out of the capital fund that doesn't have any matching money. So how long is it going to take us before we get that $5 million back into the capital fund to spend on all of the other things that we have to do? That's what we have to really be thinking about. I get wanting to do Robinson. I was sitting at the table when people were, could we get the money from here, from here, from here? I'm all for it, but I'm just saying, if we take all of this money, that is not money that's getting matching, that, that's not going to get any matching money, that money's going to be gone.
But I do think if we earmark.
And we're going to make a $500 million hole in our capital budget, so.
I think it earmarks it in case we don't get it. It gives us that flexibility.
Yeah, but not, that's not what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing right now is I'm hearing we're going to go ahead and pay for this locally. We're going to pay for Robinson locally. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, I know, but I think even, and I agree with what they're saying, but I don't think we actually have to make that decision. We won't have to make that decision until we know whether we got that federal money or not. So we're not locked into that decision about paying for it. So.
So echoing what Mayor Miller said, I get what you're saying about setting it aside in case this happens again, we have all the money to move forward. If we want to move forward now, as you two have indicated, what is the total cost of the Robinson Crossing and those sidewalks? And what, do we know?
Sean, do you have the total?
I know the Robinson I-35 project is about a five and a half million dollar project, and you're getting the other million plus from the TIP funds, so four and a half from federal, million point two from TIP, I think. Sidewalks, these are the matching, you know, Angela, I think.
About a half million.
About a half million dollars in federal, what would have been, what will be federal funds.
Without the federal funds, though, do we have, is this enough to cover it?
If you take all of it?
Yeah.
I think it would, it would drain the account, certainly along with the other ones you just mentioned. Someone mentioned the other city requests, those would be reducing the 5.2 as well, as I understand.
That would go towards the fund balance. I mean, that would go, if I understand what I've heard, if I understand what I've heard correctly, we could take 5 million out of the 5.2 million without negatively affecting the current project that we're considering, and we could take the 1.6 difference between the beginning fund balance and the ending fund balance and still fund all of the new projects proposed by staff and come out equal. And keep the fund balance at about that 20 million. Keep the fund balance at the, at the beginning level at the same level. Now, maybe I'm misunderstanding something, but that's what I thought I heard. Jane, can you go back to that slide that kind of showed the, so we can look at that?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is, under this one here, this assumes the 5.2 million dollars is spent on something. I think what Councilmember Berman was talking about is, you take the 20 million point seven beginning and the 22.3 at the end. About 1.6, and staff's recommendations here are about 1.3. So, 1.5, I'm sorry. So it basically is keeping our ending fund balance at about the same as where beginning fund balance is.
I don't, as I understand what you're saying, that's not correct. If you, if you spend $4 million or $5 million, you've reduced the fund balance by that amount, and you have reduced available for new projects.
Have you not spent the $5 million there?
The rest of the pay-go?
No.
You're saying we get $5 million to?
I think that's part of the fund balance. That's, you, you can't spend money without affecting the fund balance.
Is that, I haven't, that doesn't, if I had that up, is that a?
That doesn't.
Or are those just listing items, or is that a?
I think those are just listing items.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So you're saying that the 22 million already has the $5 million spent out of it?
$5 million is part of the 22 million.
About it being allocated.
Yeah, it just hasn't been allocated yet.
Correct.
Well, I think that's what she's saying. So.
If you remember, if you look at the fund summaries, that available for new projects is a, is a number that is below the line. It's, it's of the fund balance, okay? Here's, here's what's available. You can spend it, but it's, but you would be drawing down the fund balance.
Oh. But it's drawing down the fund balance, too. In this scenario right here, if we, if we spent that 5.2 million, what would our ending fund balance be? How would I adjust that 22 million?
Yeah, it'd be 17 million. Remember, though, that of which about, about 17 million is reserved for bond projects. It's bond money.
So do we have the financial capacity to do both of those projects on our own right now?
Yes, I'm just saying that you, you'd be affecting the fund balance, but yes, if you, if you chose to wipe out the available fund balance, yes, you could do that.
Wipe out the available fund balance, we got 20 million. Well, but 17 million.
The part of the fund balance that's not reserved for bond projects, if you wipe that out.
You said 17 is on bond projects. So that leaves around five, and how much more would we need from the 5.2?
Again, if you're going to do the Robinson I-35 and the sidewalk projects without accessing federal funds, that's about 5 million total.
On top of that?
No.
No, it would be, you'd be taking that 5.2 available down.
Okay, that was my question, I was getting confused.
Because the 5.2 million has not been spent.
That's what I understood before we went back over this.
Yeah. The 5.2 million is available to spend.
Right. And so we would just be spending the, almost all of it on none of this and those two projects? And so they're arguing, or, that sounds confrontational, and I don't think it is, but we could earmark it and wait for the federal funds, which we're pretty confident we're going to get for next year, but you're saying, well, we can move other projects up to access that same federal funding. Do you think that is accurate? Do you think that is accurate? Because I hate to give away millions of dollars.
It depends on how those, those other projects are rated too.
Right.
Amongst the other ACOG projects, that's the.
That, so that's what I'm, I mean, I, I don't want to assume that these other projects are going to have the same viability to get federal funding, and I don't want to miss out on federal funding.
That's the question.
That's way to the point. We, we've always, going back many years, we've always tried to reserve projects that are eligible for federal funding for that, that pipeline, that, that, that source of dollars, which then allows council the remaining dollars for projects that are not eligible.
Exactly.
A fire station project, a police department project, a parks project.
All the other stuff in the capital fund.
Any number of things that you might want to do. Um, so that's just been the philosophy going forward is that if we can get the federal dollars, we always have tried to.
And do we have other projects in our own pipeline, which we know we have? But are they, will they be as successful at acquiring that federal funding from ACOG?
It's one of the concerns, um, because the Robinson I thirty-five project ranks so high. We know we're gonna, we're pretty confident we're going to get that in that first, next, next first year. Um, same is true for the Tecumseh Flood project. It's that one that we're trying to trade back for the Thirty-Six Avenue project when that time comes. So there's a sort of, uh, a strategy, if you will, to get these highest ranked projects in the ACOG queue. And Robinson I thirty-five is one of those.
And when will we find out about the funding for next fiscal?
We'll have a pretty good idea how the ranking process was changed by July of this year. And then officially, we will know how we did by around February, March of next year. The, the application process doesn't start until December.
Okay.
The official application process.
And I think that's my questions for now.
Councilmember Scott?
Okay.
Dan Volman?
So ACOG has the ability to then to change the ranking process again. Cause like this time they decided that sidewalks were going to take priority. And so, okay, so you got a bunch of sidewalk projects, even though our Robinson and Crossing Bridge ranked so high, it still didn't rank apparently above the sidewalks, which is where my like complete lack of confidence is coming from. And the, the reason I want to go ahead and, um, and I agree, like, I don't want to just lose the opportunity for federal funding, but we kind of did this year. And we were anticipating getting that and beginning on these projects. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from is just sort of this place of disappointment in the process that has been placed before us. And I know that they have acknowledged it was a mistake and that, um, they're going to try to change it going forward. But I don't know if I can put my full confidence in saying, in them saying, or the new process ranking Robinson and Crossers at the same, um, basically critical ranking that it was at before, when we lost the funding this year over sidewalks.
Appreciate that.
And I understand, you know, the sidewalks are super important in those areas where they had them. And that's why they received all this funding. But still, it's critical.
I would just say that we've got twenty-five years of confidence in ACOG. And, and actually, we are ACOG, you are ACOG.
We, okay, I've lost faith in myself.
It will be, it'll be the member of cities that will change the ranking.
Mayor Clark would be sitting on that committee.
So we really have a lot of confidence.
Steve, you had your hand up. Hold on, it's Stephen and Bill and Bria.
Okay.
I mean, that kind of answered my question about how long we have to wait. We found out April that this was happening. So I assume it'd be April of next year when we know for sure when we get, what our projects are going to be. So, um, that answered my question about that. Um, I mean, I think there is reason to be concerned. I mean, the board is made up of a lot of different cities in the metro. Some are very small and don't get any federal, don't get any ACOG money. So it's hard to tell how they vote on different things in my experience going to meetings. So, um, but, uh, so I'm, you know, um, yeah, I'm not sure which way to go forward with this now that we've got.
Yeah, so my, my question, um, Sean, was, um, following up what, what Bria was asking about in, in, in a way, is do we have projects? Sounds like you mentioned Northwest Thirty-Six Street project, but council member, council member tells me that's a big, big dollar, big ticket item that is probably not feasible. So I guess the other one that you mentioned that's kind of in the pipeline that's on hold a little bit is James Garner. Uh, how do we feel that it's going to score?
It scored the highest amount of all the remaining projects except Robinson I thirty-five.
So we can move it up the list?
Do very well. And you got the matching funds in Norman Forward. So.
Okay.
We expect that one to do well. Um, Thirty-Six is the one that's challenging, but there's, again, there's a very large project, eleven, eleven and a half million dollars in federal funds split up into two different years, five and a half million each year. Um, so it's just a very big project that's different than the rest of these.
And let me add the importance of the James Garner project by moving it up the list. In the Norman Forward budget, there is no assumption that we're getting ACOG money. So this, if we got three million dollars from ACOG for Norman Forward, that frees out three million dollars in Norman Forward. So it's not only helps us with that, get that project done, but it adds three million dollars to the Norman Forward account as opposed to the, the capital fund. So we're kind of trading four and a half million dollars in the capital account for three million dollars into the Norman Forward account on capital projects. I think, Jerry, get your question answered.
So in recapping what you're throwing out there is we earmark it. So even if we don't do it immediately, we will start within the next year because we'll know next fiscal year, and we already have four point five million put aside. And it won't crush all of our other capital projects next year if we do it with our own money, because we will have saved up for it.
I don't know if I'd say we crush other projects. I mean, we, we kind of start fresh each year with ten or eleven million dollars of new capital money. It's not like the general.
By crushing, I mean, if we, if we do it right now, there is no money for any other capital projects.
Well, if you think about it, a, a month or so ago, there's five million dollars in the exist anyway. This is new money.
Fair enough.
So the, 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 the schedule for the capital funds are still the same. We just actually, instead of, those projects were already in the capital fund, it's just we're refinancing them. So, I think, Councilman, or Mayor Miller, I'm sorry.
Okay. I, I think maybe the right thing to do would be to do what council member Cassa Berry suggested, at least temporarily, put it aside right now, because you all will have lots of time next year if you, if you make a different decision about Robinson, or if you do make a decision, you're going to use all of it. Let ACOG, let the, uh, technical committee go through all that. Because what happened last year was different than what's going to happen now. Last year, they totally redesigned the whole ranking system. It was totally different. All they're going to do now is they're going to, they're going to make some changes to it where they saw it didn't work. So we're not talking about a whole new ranking system. So let's see what happens over the summer. They'll have a really good sense about it. And then you, then you all can, you'll have the money set aside and you can make a decision at any time to, to go ahead and use it. But I'd give it a little more time because what happened was really, really unusual. They said they're going to fix it. We've got a great, great track record of getting the money. And, and nobody can argue that that Robinson intersection's not in five lights in a row, or however many there are, is the worst. It's awful.
It's the worst. We all. Like they lost a bet to see how many.
So that's.
Councilmember Miller, but I wanted to, Sean, did you have a clarification? Sorry, you kind of had your hand up.
No, no, sir.
No, I don't think.
Okay. Councilmember?
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with putting it as a contingency. I guess my concern with, it almost feels like we're trying to have it both ways, that we're trying to say, well, we're not so confident that ACOG will give us the money for our top rated project. But if we pay for that project now, our next highest project will get funded because that will be our top rated project. So if we're not going to have confidence in ACOG, I think we should just not have confidence in ACOG across the board and not say, well, we don't have confidence in them for this project. But yay, if we take this project away, we have the utmost confidence that this next one will get funded. So.
I don't have that confidence though, that's my concern.
Right, and having no confidence in anything is totally fine. But I feel like I don't want to make this decision thinking that, well, the benefit is that then we will get the money for James Garner, because if we don't have confidence that ACOG's not going to give all the money to Oklahoma City, then we should just not have confidence that they're not going to give all the money to Oklahoma City. So I'm fine, I'm fine with holding it kind of as a contingency. I still am a little nervous about, because now that I look, the difference between this and this, now I know what you mean by saying below the line, that yes, if we take all of this out, we have twenty-two point three million dollars in our ending fund balance. But yeah, it will actually draw down the twenty-two to seventeen, which is not what I was thinking when I saw this. It looks like it's above the line there, when really it's below the line here. So I do have some concern, considering how much is being reserved for bonds, that, that leaves us almost no wiggle room at all. So I'm fine with reserves because that means we're not really spending it. We're just, you know, kind of, that's hedging our bets. Putting it aside is hedging our bets. Spending it is not hedging our bets.
But that's not a decision we have to make now.
Right, right. But that's what I mean, I'm fine, I'm fine with putting it aside. I don't necessarily feel like we're in the best position to be committing that money now and telling Sean, yes, tomorrow, let's send out the RFPs for Robinson's Crossing. So that's kind of where I'm at. I would have been totally fine with it if we could have maintained that twenty-two million fund balance while spending this money. I'm sure Anthony would love that too. Um, but since we can't, I get kind of nervous about committing that money too much, considering how much we still have in.
I will, I will add, as far as the fund balance goes and the capital fund versus the fund balance in the general fund, the general fund's a little more fungible. I mean, sales tax is down, or, you know, if, if you have a shortage in your general fund, you're laying off person, personnel, you're cutting service. If your capital fund balance goes down, you're deferring projects. Hard, you know, nobody gets laid off, everybody's trash gets picked up. It's just a matter of the.
When do you do Robinson?
When do I do it? You know, when do I put this off? So I think you've got more.
And assuming that projects don't run over budget.
Right, well, you've also got a contingency in there of that, of, you know, we've got a million dollars contingency in the capital fund there. And I think Anthony, in the, in the seventeen million dollars set for the bond project, is interest in there?
Not budgeted in there. You know, there is a, there is a budgeted interest income, but it's not like built in for any specific project.
But interest expense, I'm sorry, is that, that, in the project, do we have interest expense?
No, 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 you have debt service, which includes the interest cost as a debt service payment.
Okay, but in that debt service, we have a assumed rate of interest. And how does that?
Once you sold the bond, you have an amortization schedule.
I know, but budget wise, when we budgeted for that interest, did, did the interest not come in low, interest rate not come in lower than what we had budgeted for?
When you budgeted for the, the, the debt service, you knew what the amortization schedule was. So those interest costs are fixed, you know what they are.
But when we did the bond project to the citizens, we said it's going to be seventy million dollars or whatever it was, that had a debt service in it. And had a, had assumed. The interest rate that we got on the first twenty million dollars is less than what our assumed interest rate was in that project. Yes or no? Okay, so there's savings there.
Not from a budgetary standpoint, because while yes, the interest rate may have been lower than what was assumed when, um, you did the estimates for the bond proposition. Once the bond proposition is passed and you actually start to budget for the projects and you start to budget for the debt service, at that point, you know what the amortization schedule is. So you're budgeting based on that fixed amortization schedule.
But right now, we're only budgeting on, on the twenty millions, we know what that is. We don't know what the rest of it is. So we, we haven't initialized, we haven't initialized bond yet.
But we've gotten bids on them, we have an amortization schedule, we're going to close in two weeks. We, and, and when we build a debt service number into the budget, it will be based on.
That's only twenty million though. It was a seventy million dollar, I mean, we've got, we're going to have a second, third tranche, and we don't know what that is yet.
But again, we're not budgeting for that yet.
I got you.
We haven't sold those bonds yet. Three or four years out here in the future, we have a plugged number in there about when the principal will come in. But as far as the debt service cost, which includes interest, that won't be budgeted until we sold the bond.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scott?
So let's say that we either earmark the five and a half million for, or five point two million for Robinson and the sidewalk projects, and, or we decide to go ahead and spend them. What is the impact of spending down to seventeen million from twenty-two?
It would be twenty-two though, right?
No.
Seventeen million of that is reserved for bond projects.
Say again?
Of that, of that twenty-two, seventeen million of that is reserved for bond projects. So it's really about five millions with that ending fund balances available.
Five million, and we would spend that?
Yes.
We would, what we're saying is that we would spend that on the sidewalks and Robinson.
That five point two is the amount of fund balance that's available spent.
So then that's what, I mean, that's ultimately like what we're talking about.
Finish your question though, because.
What's the impact?
The impact is that you would have wiped out the available fund balance. And, and that's.
And it just leaves no room for overspending on any of the other bond projects.
Not bond projects, all money for the bond projects.
Or just any of the capital projects, yeah, the new projects.
We have no, no funds available for available new projects, no, no new pay as you go projects.
In this fiscal year?
Correct.
Right. In this fiscal year. So even if we were to not go ahead and spend it outright, but we earmark it, then we have that five million there.
We have it appropriated, it will still be there available.
And so if, if we find out that we're not getting any money, then we could move forward on it.
In the next year though.
During the course of next fiscal year, yes.
You're saying.
So if we find out in July that we're not getting.
We would find out in what, February or something is what you say?
Have a good idea in July, if they've made the changes we need.
And that we just mentioned, Brenda asked the question, we're still working on the Robinson I thirty-five project. We're finishing design, we're acquiring land, we're doing utilities. Uh, the funding is in the account to do all of that. You're not starting.
On our end.
Already there in the bank, it's effectively the TIP dollars. The soonest we could probably bid that project, either locally funded or federally funded, is probably January, February anyway.
Even if we were to just go ahead and say, let's spend this five million dollars on it, right? It would still be, you would be bidding in January, February. So if we earmark it and then wait to hear back on whether we see federal funding, then what, at what timeline are we looking at bidding on that project?
Same thing, we would, we would target probably a January, February bid opening either way. And, and hopefully we'll know right in there which, which one is more beneficial, federally funded or locally funded.
And this will keep us on schedule as far as going to do it. And then it, once we're on schedule, it's a matter of how we pay for it.
If we don't get it.
We don't get it, then we know, we can confidently bid it because we know we've got the money.
Okay.
Set aside.
I misspoke, if I may. So the federal funds that we're competing for will be available October of twenty twenty. So we'll be starting the work in October.
So we'd be bidding in February to begin the work in October.
We would be. Correct.
We, we would be waiting a year to get four million dollars. But, but I think what I hear people saying is that we would, we could potentially know early enough this summer, fall, if we aren't, if we don't feel good about getting the money, to pull the trigger and still stay pretty close to on schedule for this fall, if we decide to go ahead and fund it locally. But it's almost like waiting, I'll say, nine, six months, four months, to see if these things really get changed and if we think it's going to score like we think it's going to score and that there's not going to be an influx of other projects that are going to bump us down, et cetera, et cetera. All those risks, but twenty-five years of experience managing that risk. And then coming back to council, I would assume, I don't know, pretty early, you know, August, it sounds like.
I think mid-year for sure. Um, certainly by August, we'll know how the ranking process is going. Mid, mid-year for sure, you'll know kind of where you, what your best options are.
Because it sounds to me, if we do this and we hold the five million, basically the staff requested projects are going to be on hold as well. Unless we decide to go ahead and draw down, you know, because worst case scenario, if we don't get the federal money on the five million dollars of sidewalks and street projects and refund the staff's requested projects, we're, we're drawing down, you know, even more. So Sean, while we're, while we're talking about this, I have, I have the floor for a second. One last question I have for you, is my sidewalk, these sidewalk projects? I mean, it sounds like you're, you feel confident in the scoring on Robinson Street. Where did the sidewalk projects score? And if we, if they change, if the program changed back? What I thought I heard you guys say at the last meeting was, sometimes we just get lucky and those fall into place because there's a little bit of money left over. And that certainly doesn't give me high level of confidence, you know, of those scoring well and getting, getting those projects funded based on scoring, but rather kind of just random luck of how the numbers shake out.
Those are more risky.
And so I'm kind of leaning towards saying, I'd rather go ahead and do those and fund those, spend the half million dollars, get those community sidewalk projects done. That'll help clear out some of the litter of the other projects we have in there. And so we can focus on our big road projects. That was part of what I was trying to say at last meeting.
Again, that, how the sidewalk projects rank will be looked at with this revision to the criteria. So we will be able to understand better why the Oklahoma City projects rank so high and why ours didn't. So we will be able to understand better why the Oklahoma City projects ranked so high and why ours didn't, and hopefully try to level that up. So I, I would ask for patience also on those projects and see what happens first this summer with the new criteria. In January, February, we will actually have the projects rated and ranked. And we would know if we're going to get federal funds October the first, to pay for that construction or not. And I know I'm not quite answering your question. Again, give us a chance to understand and develop this new criteria before we make those decisions. I, I still think there's a chance to make our sidewalk projects ranked more competitively along with those that Oklahoma City submitted.
But I think we.
But don't you think that budget wise, that reserves in case it falls through?
And we, we've waited, I mean, we've, we've had these sidewalk projects in the queue for several years.
Yeah. Yes.
And so I think by budgeting for this, if the ACOG form comes back up, Oklahoma City figured out no way to do it, sidewalk projects get a lesser amount of it, we still have that money available to, we can get those projects done regardless. But what you're saying is you think there's still a good, you still think there's a chance, not a good chance or any type of, so what the good or bad chance of getting some federal funding?
It is reasonable.
So it leaves us an option available to do that. If our loan, if our loan falls through, we can still buy the house. We've got the money in savings.
I mean.
Borrow from grandma.
That's right.
I mean, but is it, is it real, is it realistic that we would get Robinson Street, James Garner, and two sidewalk projects funded next year? I mean, that doesn't seem reasonable to me. And so to me, if I'm the city of Norman, you know, and I, and someone comes to me and just from a negotiating standpoint says, what's most important to you? You guys are going to say Robinson Street Crossing and, you know, one of the other road projects. And I, and I get that. So I'm saying, do yourself a favor, help me help you by, let's just take half a million dollars and fund these projects and get them off the list and not have to hassle with them. Because it's a big difference to me in gambling, to me is a big difference in gambling over four million dollars. While I do support funding that project and setting that money aside, there is a big difference in gambling over four million dollars and waiting a year or less, you know, six months or so to see if we're going to get the funds than just half a million. I mean, with all due respect, half a million is not as much. And, you know, we're going to be opening up that new central library this summer. And if we wait until October of next year to maybe get the money and start those projects, we're going to be tearing up Flood Street. We're already going to be tearing up Porter. I mean, I'm just trying to think holistically here that our community is going to be pissed off at us that we're doing sidewalk projects on Flood. We're going to be doing Porter Avenue streetscape projects. And people are going to try to get to our four million dollar library and say, what are those boneheads at City Hall not playing for this better? And so let's try to help ourselves and not try to have both major north-south corridors torn up. Let's go in and get started on Flood. This would be my, what I would advocate for is half a million dollars in this budget is not going to, you know, bankrupt us or make a significant impact. While I do understand the four million dollars, you know, waiting six months or some period of time, four months, to see how the, if we get the ratings changed to know if that's going to shake out. Because what I, what I hear, I don't hear that the rating change is going to have a significant impact on our sidewalk projects, although they may, maybe on our road projects. I guess that's my pitch. I'm sorry.
I think the sidewalk projects have a different bucket than road.
Apparently not, because all Oklahoma City projects were sidewalks.
That's because they changed the amount going to sidewalks, the percentage going to sidewalks. And so more sidewalks.
Well, yeah, which means next year, if they put it back, it's going to be a lot less money to go to sidewalks.
Correct.
Because there was a lot more money this past year. We got none.
Correct.
Which makes me feel even worse.
Right.
I mean, so you're making my argument for it. Thank you.
No, I'm trying to point something out to you.
All the more important that we go in and get those funded.
Two questions. Anthony, these, this packet of amendments that we were given, I'm specifically asking about number fifteen about the capital, the increase in the capital outlay transfer by six hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the stormwater camera truck. Is that included in this? So we should expect this twenty-two point three million ending fund balance to be another six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars less.
Are we spending money on stormwater?
You're not at that meeting?
I thought the community didn't want us to spend money on stormwater.
But so I just, I, and I honestly just kind of started flipping through this, so I'm not sure if there are other.
That's next topic.
Okay, we're going to get there. Okay, okay, great. My second question. Chief, I'm glad you're back there. I was kind of looking around to see if you were here because I had a question. Can you give me a little bit of an update on the animal welfare HVAC system since we're heading into summer? And is that, I know we were having some conversations with the company to try and fix the humidity issue that the HVAC system was causing in particular.
Right. This, what's in there now is to replace those units on the roof.
Okay.
Because it's deteriorating, you know, they go down.
We waited too long, yeah.
In certain areas, like the Catteries where we've been having to go down, it gets particularly in the summer, you know, they can be a little cold for a while.
Right.
When you're in there in the summer for a few days, it gets pretty hot in there. So that's why we was looking at replacing those units on the top to make them, probably won't corrode like then in the future.
Okay, that was going to be my next question. Does that include sending the components down to Texas or whatever it is for the company to coat them?
Yes, I believe it does.
Okay. Well, this is something I think we very seriously need to consider. We've been struggling with this HVAC system for a few years, and part of the reason why we need to replace them is because we couldn't find the money to send the old ones down to get coated. This is going to continue to be an issue. Not only is it actually causing parts of the shelter to deteriorate, if you have excess humidity, it causes things like laminate to peel off of anything where there's laminate. We also have mold in our anesthesia machine. So this is a pretty significant health, becoming a very significant health issue, not just for the animals there, but I would imagine also for staff as mold starts to grow. That becomes an issue and it does, if anyone who's been down there in the summer, it gets extremely hot just as it is. And yeah, so part of that is a struggling HVAC system that probably should have been considered before the building was built. I know there was something about where it's located next to the facilities that, yes, that because of the way the wind blows, it corrodes the system. So I don't know much about anything else in these new projects, but they, I know that the police department had kind of withheld that HVAC system because they were trying to see if they could get it fixed or changed or done something. And clearly, it just needs to be replaced. So.
That's, that's our next item.
Okay.
Let's speak, so.
I just wanted to make sure that we talked about that because that is something, it is difficult to spend even just a few hours down at the shelter, and I don't even work there. So I can't imagine having to work in that. I certainly don't want to subject our shelter vet to using equipment that is growing mold. That is not good for anyone. So just wanted to.
Did you have a question on the capital fund or general fund?
Capital.
Okay.
It's been, I mean, it's been briefly brought up here in the meeting, but I guess one of the things I was thinking about, too, is the, talking about earmarking funds for Robinson. And I get that. I understand that's the bigger traffic problem. But my concern was that Thirty-sixth Avenue Northwest is an actual voter-approved project. It's been delayed, delayed. I think Robinson is a bigger problem to fix, but one's a voter-approved project, the other one's not. And so I.
But it's a voter-approved kind of with federal funding.
Right. And so I'm wondering.
Totally married federal funding on that one, so.
Well, I'm wondering is there, are we looking at further than a year delay on that one?
Just the same on the Robinson I thirty-five, the, the two top priority projects in what would have been federal fiscal twenty, October this year, would have been Robinson I thirty-five and the first phase of Thirty-sixth, second phase of Thirty-sixth then next year. But both of those, James Garner was second.
Okay.
And we agree with you, it's a top priority because it was a voter.
I thought James Garner was second.
Bond program. It was targeted for twenty eighteen. We're hoping to build it.
Yeah.
Sean thought that James Garner was second, or is that a different?
James Garner ranked second, but in terms of the.
Oh, our priority, I guess. Okay.
I just want to make sure that one doesn't get, I mean, I, I can't wait for James Garner to happen, too, but I think, you know, Thirty-sixth was voted on a long time ago, so.
Councilman Hickman.
I, I guess I would ask council to consider that we, one, go ahead and fund the two sidewalk projects. Two, we go ahead and fund the animal shelter HVAC, because I do agree that is a need that we need immediately for both the staff, the animals, and the public that goes there to visit. It affects all three stake groups, stakeholders. And then, then we earmark or do whatever we talked about on the four and a half million for the Robinson Street project, with the idea that at the mid-year point or so, we, we get back with staff and get a thumbs up or thumbs down if it looks like it's a go. And if it's a thumbs up, then we discuss the other staff requests and needs for funding at that time. And if it's a no-go on the federal funding, we pull the trigger on going forward with Robinson Crossing. At least that way, we're I think lightening the load on staff and the risk of the federal funding by going ahead and funding those five, those two sidewalk projects that are community sidewalks and going ahead and taking care of what I think is a critical need at the shelter. Like, I totally agree with what Kate said about the, the smell and the, the heat and everything. So that would be my request.
I guess my question would be, that spends more than we got. Does it, what does that add to? Only if we actually spend it.
Yeah, because you haven't spent the, the reserve for Robinson, you would effectively reduce the amount that you're reserving from four point five to something like four or something.
Yeah.
And then you get to the point like you were saying, if we decide to do it that way with local funds, you could maybe break it into two fiscal years. That's, yeah. Sean, Sean, I noticed on, on the, on the Works Department, this three hundred thousand dollars for the I thirty-four corridor study, can that really be delayed? I mean, don't we kind of need to have our part done?
It's been delayed far more comfortable. We're, we're pressing ODOT to.
Because that's kind of Indian Hills and we've got a lot of projects there that I think that helps us get points for the stuff like that. So I was wondering, is that really something?
It's a priority. Well, it helps us get the interchange replaced. That's really what it's all about. And until we get through phase two, we'll never get opposition to, for ODOT to pay for that interchange.
The Indian Hills interchange.
Top priority, really, it is.
Well, I'll add that to my list as well.
Yeah.
Well, that was one of my questions because, I mean, Moore is. They're going forward with their funding portion, it seems. So the comment was that Moore, the city of Moore is also jointly funding that with us, too. So they're kind of waiting for us.
Have they, have they approved their part of the funding?
Yes, we're really just both of us are waiting for ODOT to.
The other, I, I would probably want some information about the city file system or anything that comes from IT. I'm always wondering what the magnitude of that is. And then also, how bad are the fire station ports?
For the IT portion, I'm glad you asked the question. I think maybe these were categorized as Santa's list or Kiff's list. This is critical infrastructure that we rely on. Unfortunately, we're roped into this technology. And so this house is on body cans. It houses all of our electronic filing systems for documentation. Where we're going from paper storage to electronic storage, all of that. And then our daily, this, this presentation's housed on there. And this is stuff that we're, it's, it's out of life, out of support. If we don't replace it, then it will, we'll have to go to a third party. And it's probably not going to be something we can expand. Remember, reboot it on a regular basis now because we're out of memory on it. And so it's degrading as we go forward in time and as we add new vehicles.
Well, let me just add, I think on these projects here, again, I don't think these are Santa, Mrs. Christians. I think all of these are critical. And.
I wanted to be Santa. I have a question about the, about the IT department as well, the hardware replacement.
Councilman Scott.
So as far as that goes, do we have to, I know we're talking about like moving things from these servers that currently are onsite into this whole new hardware system. And so will those servers, I mean, do you have to like, is this accounting for making more space for those also? Or is this all going to replace what we currently have? Or is it more of a backup, like a redundancy?
This will go to replace the old equipment and expand it.
And expand it? And that's all accounted for, or there is already space for that expansion?
There's no space for expansion right now, just with account for worship space.
Okay, and then I guess more generally, since we're eventually going to be looking at remodeling the municipal complex, how is this going to coincide? So if we're looking at kind of expanding different areas, is it jumping the gun to spend money upfront on when we're going to be renovating soon? And I'm just asking a general question. I don't know who to.
Good question.
Or are we?
Underway. We're already underway. So then it is already, it's all, so it's all going together. We're not going to spend additional.
Bond is bond.
Okay, cool.
We've already, we've, they've already been meeting with staff, Terry and McKinney, and so all of these things are being discussed and what the needs are in each one of these areas as they design the remodel, which is already underway.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
I want to make sure this, the bond money, however, does not pay for any of these IT needs.
Right.
No, but would, so here in the new projects per foot follow-up question. Would this come out of that five, that newfound five million pay-go money?
Yes.
So then we're talking about spending this money, spending the money on the sidewalk projects, on the HVAC, which hasn't been proposed by staff. So once, and I guess it came in a little late, but once all of these projects, priority projects have been allocated, how much is left over in the five million?
I think what we're looking at is if, if we, out of that five point two, if we take the sidewalks, we take the hardware, we take the I thirty-five corridor study, HVAC on the animal welfare.
Nine hundred fifty thousand. Checks included.
Yeah, and what's left over gets allocated to the Robinson Street. I really think that's a.
How much point nine, sorry?
It's nine hundred fifty thousand dollars for those three projects.
Robinson Street projects. And then.
And then plus the sidewalks.
And the sidewalks would be another half million. So now you're one point four.
Okay.
And so of that five point two, I think you're going to be a little bit short.
Of what we would need for Robinson.
But I think Robinson is also a two fiscal year deal.
And there's.
About Sean?
And there's TIF money.
You're not, you're not going to be able, we're not going to spend all of that in one year.
We would, well.
Because we have to pay.
If we want to reserve those dollars.
I mean, we wouldn't reserve it, but if we reserve, we reserve four million dollars this year, we may have to come up with half a million dollars in next year's. And that would still be. Or do we need to preserve all of it in year one? I know that's ideal, but.
Sure. Again, just as a non-accountant here, I was just having work with this. The reason you're keeping a fund balance here is because you're running a five-year capital improvement program. So those seventeen million dollars are allocated for a number of projects next year and two years from now. So if you move anything from here, you're just pushing up against the reservation of dollars for other projects in future years. And you have to make sure that you've got enough fund balance to cover that.
So we're doing what we do every year. We're pushing projects off.
Exactly, yeah.
By prioritizing the most critical needs, I think the IT structure, IT hardware is critical, the animal HVAC is critical. I mean, I think the I thirty-five corridor allows us to get some more money. I'd kind of like to see us spend five thousand dollars, get the windows repaired, just out of twenty million dollar budget, I think.
But I think we're all knocking on wood, hoping that we get the federal money. I think we're all knocking on wood, hoping we get the federal money for Robinson. Because if we, if we do those, we do the sidewalks, the IT, the HVAC, and the corridor study, those three, or those four, that's one point, one point four million. If we just did that, you know, we'd have three point eight million still in the, in the, in the balance. And if we, if we just kind of earmarked that three point eight to three point five, whatever we wanted to say, with the Robinson Street project. And then if it does fall through federally, you know, at the mid-year point or whatever, you know, we can, Sean, to figure out either, can we find the rest of the money to go ahead and fully fund it, the remaining seven hundred thousand? Or, you know, do we break it into two fiscal years, you know, tap, tap the TIF money, whatever we got to do to get it done immediately? And if, Lord willing, you know, we get the federal funds, then we got a little fund balance to work with at the mid-year point or for the next fiscal year.
I think that's kind of consistent.
At least that we're getting some things done, but we're not sitting on and doing nothing, holding all the money, but we're, we're moving forward on, you know, three or four, you know, more critical projects and still holding back some of the money.
I would, I would make the point, I think that's kind of consistent. We, we've done this twice before. That's when we had the, the five million dollars of the TIF money, you know, that was a mid-year deal and we didn't spend it then. We kind of waited to see, so we had some more time to go through. And that's kind of what we're doing here. And we kind of changed our philosophy a little bit on this last bond project, where before everything was all federal funding. We could leverage as much money as we could federal. And then we kind of ran into these deals of timing differences, this is taking so longer. So we moved those three or four projects up, but we use a hundred percent local funding. So we've done that with bond money. The voters have approved that. So I'm going to say they like that project. They like that. They're okay with that concept. And so we would kind of be doing the same thing with a non bond-approved project with, with Robinson Street, because it's kind of critical. Jane, get your hand up, so please.
Please. So I just want to make sure, so Councilor Hickman, you're talking about the two sidewalk projects?
Yes. So what I'm proposing is the two sidewalk projects get funded.
It's like Porter and Claussen.
That's what I wanted to find.
Porter and Claussen.
Flood, Gray Acres is one of them, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And then?
Claussen, Lindsay, Boyd, something like that. One was like two sixty or like two forty.
That's what I wanted to know. And that one was fifty-eight thousand.
Goes all the way past Soye Martel. So it's inward seven too.
Yeah.
So you got sixty-two five and fifty-eight thousand.
That is the local match.
Yeah, there's somebody already in the budget that's a local match.
Okay. And so what would be the total for the?
It's about half a million dollars for both projects.
For both? Okay, thank you.
Like five.
So what I'm proposing, Jane, is those two sidewalk projects, the IT department's request, the animal welfare HVAC and the I thirty-five corridor study, phase two, that we fund those by projects, for projects currently. And that we earmark, if that's the right way of saying it, the remaining balance of that five point two million for the Robinson Crossing project to be reconsidered at the approximate mid-year point when staff feels like they've got a good feeling about the rating system to come back to council and say, yes, we are highly confident we're going to get the federal funds. Do you want to spend any of this money now on these other staff requests or other things? Or do you want to just carry it over like we did the TIP money to the next budget cycle? And if the staff's comment is, no, we're not going to get the federal money, then we come up with a plan to take the money we've earmarked, the TIP money, and get started on that project instead of continue to wait.
Does that work?
Councilman Holman.
Kate?
Yes, I think so. I agree. Um, I would like to hear from Chief King about the fire station stuff. I mean, are the doors falling off, the rehab part, is there need to be done right now? Is there a real severe problem at Fire Station Four? I mean, it looks like to me the sports and pickleball are probably going to have to be cut out of this one for now, but, um, and then the window repair, is it, is it busted out? I mean, what's, can it wait?
We could find it. We've got nine hundred and forty-five thousand of contention.
But yeah, I would like to hear how bad this, you know, stations problems are.
So we had our overhead door company go ahead and go around to all the stations, look at all the doors and he prioritized what we've asked for. So to break it down, it's actually four doors, a station one, then openers, just one apiece at stations two and four. And, uh, we patched them together for quite a while and, you know, it's important that they open. That's a delayed response when they don't, so.
So it's helpful, so you're going through them.
Well, yeah, I wasn't sure what the condition, what, what was going on with it.
How can you argue with that?
Yeah.
Station one's old.
And station four, the issue there is the neighbor there planted a lot of bamboo and they put a new fence and put a berm in. So it's changed the water flow there. They've actually got sandbags up, heating water out of the station.
Stormwater. Okay, so, okay, so it sounds like the overhead doors may be more pressing, but both are problems.
We're working on these two projects as our A number.
I would like to add those two also, I think.
Add the two, only other small ones.
They're small and I think they're impactful. I did, I, well, so I did talk to Councilman Carter before I missed meeting with this and talked to him about the Robinson Street project. He was, he was comfortable with that. I didn't get a chance to talk to him about these other projects, but Councilman Carter.
Uh, Councilmember Holman mentioned the Parks Department stuff. Um, with pickleball, I, and so you all know what that was. We have tennis courts in East Norman that currently need a lot of work. And so we were going to rehab them to turn, is it two courts into eight pickleball courts? And we have a growing pickleball community and I definitely want to support that. But we can at least paint them temporarily so they can be used. They just won't be as nice because that hundred and twenty involves lights, like resurfacing, all sorts of stuff. So there is a temporary, yeah, nets. So there is a temporary for that. But I, I do want to keep that on our radar, much like, uh, disc golf and other tourism opportunities. There, there's a tournament going on right now that I think was pretty successful, or is it completed?
Disc golf or?
Uh, the pickleball.
It's part of the senior games. I think they're done.
And was it well attended and what was your, your thoughts on, was this the first year we've done that?
More than the other senior sporting events.
I also think that'd be an eligible project for Norman Forward, because you know, we've got the page ago on Norman Forward projects for different parks, stuff like this. So I, I could see that being, there's like five million dollars a year. So I could see that and work into the Norman Forward budget if there's.
I just want to make sure, as we're looking at, you know, quality of life for our senior residents, that is something we need to be mindful of. So just throwing that out there, but I would like the temporary fix, uh, if other things don't work out. And then could you tell me more about what the Little X Sport Complex is, just so I know? Because I'll channel my Councilmember Wilson. We need to make sure we're showing East Norman some love as well.
We, uh, had a project put together by Cardinal Engineering to solve a lot of drainage issues out there. We got as far as we could with the funding we had a few years ago and there's about that much stuff to do. To, on Field One, dug out some, uh, bleacher areas, need some work. And then there's retaining wall stage we need to do to keep things from shedding down Field Two where everything collects and kind of wipes out. Doesn't do anymore. There's just a finish up and then to rework the area going out to the lower, uh, parking lot down there in the far south end. Sort of a lot of people park there and come up to the fields. That needs to be finished off for some better drainage and.
So if it rains, these kids don't get to play?
No, not anymore. It used to be like that, but the, the final solution, they may have some muddy dugout still and some things like that that we need to fix.
So you wouldn't say that's an absolute pressing, stopping them from playing?
No, it's not stopping them from playing. It's the end of a three or four year permit program.
Thank you.
Councilman Clark, I'll just say for the record that if at the mid-year point, we don't need that money for Robinson, I'm with you.
On both of them or?
Ma'am.
Absolutely, yeah.
Just clarifying, but are you with me to go play pickleball sometime?
Oh, I don't know.
I'll get him out and play some disc golf first and slim him down.
I don't, I hear about, I hear about what you disc golfers people do. I don't.
He's in training for the finesse bleeding contest.
That's right.
He's got, he's got title in there. Okay, so, um,
I just.
Want to go through the rest of these amendments?
First, can I go through a couple?
Yes, please.
Clarifications. Okay, so with the exception of, of, uh, on slide, on slide, maybe, there it is. So on slide three, you guys have already approved that. That went to council back, uh, May, this year. And then these amendments, we didn't talk about any, changing anything here, so this is, is still a go on the Flood Avenue Multimodal we've removed. The street division is still postponed and then the Thunderbird TMDO is still, uh, out to twenty-one.
And Jane, with, with those changes, is that part of that five point two main change? Is that assuming with the, that's assuming those changes, right?
Yes. Then on this slide, I just want to make sure. So Councilmember Hickman, we are including the flood sidewalk at sixty-two five.
No, I thought they were at their full cost.
Well, that's correct.
It would be a full cost, but for this change here, I'm just trying to make sure that.
We're just identifying.
Oh, okay. Then the Claussen sidewalk?
Correct. So those won't be postponed?
Right, I'm pulling those, pulling those off. The public, public works trucks at six twelve one thirty-eight that was added, is that still staying?
Could you give us a little more detail on what that is?
Was the discussion Friday or rather Thursday, uh, with the finance committee to bring in the camera truck operation for stormwater maintenance operations. That was the discussion we had. So this would buy, um, the two pieces of equipment, the camera truck and the flush truck to run that.
Well, I know the thing with that is, that is so much preventive maintenance. You know, that's just save us money in the long run by.
Who's going to drive those trucks? Well, then there's two staff members also associated with this proposal that would be in the general fund.
General fund. That's coming from the general fund. I got an extra hundred, I got a extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars in general fund.
I know it's important. I just worry that we're only making the possibility, if there is a possibility, of getting a stormwater fee passed that much more difficult when we find six hundred thousand dollars in capital bond, capital projects to buy capital. I mean, you know, these were things that were talked about at all these public meetings that we were going to spend this money on. Now we're going to just buy it out of our capital fund. And that's great. I don't mean that in a bad way, but it's going to make the people who believe that we have the money to do the work, that we do have the money to do the work.
That's because we're, that's because we're putting up other projects.
No, I, I, well, then it's a matter of making it a priority within our, within our budget. And the same, I mean, I would rather personally, well, I know it's important. I'd rather if we have the money to hire two new positions, hire a forester. And hire two drivers of a public works truck.
Forester's in there.
Okay, well, great. I mean, but my, my point, I guess, is my ultimate takeaway is I think we as a council have to be cognizant that if we're going to start chipping away at this stormwater fee projects and staffing, that we, when we go back, if we deal with the fee, we're going to have to go back and ask for a lesser amount because we will have now done some of this stuff or realize that it might be going to make our job more difficult. I don't know if council is going to go back and try to ask for a fee or not. A lot of people said it was really important. Um, I just, I'm just cautious. I mean, I would, you know, like I said, if we're, I would personally prefer to, like I said last time, take that six hundred and twelve thousand dollars and save money and start doing the big capital projects that are in the, the, the stormwater master plan. But I, I understand it's important. I'm just, I guess, I'm, I'm just, I'm conflicted. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure what's the right thing to do. I just felt like we needed to be aware of that.
Let me ask you, Sean or Kerry, if you had six hundred thousand dollars for capital projects, not, you'd have to save it. Infrastructure projects.
King.
It would not be able to fund our top priority projects.
Well, but how many lower projects do we get knocked out?
It would depend, but let me give you an example of why this camera truck is needed now. Today, on Lindsay, we have flooding. There is a blockage in that pipe. I can't tell you exactly where that blockage is in the pipe because I don't have a camera truck to get down in there today and figure out what's causing that blockage so we can remove it. Luckily, we're not going to get rain for a couple more days and I can make some arrangements. But if I had that camera truck, we'd already have that blockage out. We'd know exactly what it was and it would be gone. And we run into this situation every time it rains in various parts of town. That's why that truck is my number one priority.
Is this part of the new Lindsay, the new Lindsay construction or West Lindsay?
Brand new. This is the brand new system. So again, we just carried this point where we were a little shocked this morning to find that our brand new pipeline is now clogged with material. We can't see it. We can't fix it. We're going to borrow the camera truck from the sanitation or from U N A U A. But I would just point out to you that we are twenty years behind. I know, this is not going to be solved with a fee. We've already gone twice to the voters. We are twenty years behind basic maintenance. If you ask any of our team, we're going to always give you this answer. We need more maintenance dollars to do basic maintenance on what we have. We would forego all of the capital work until we get our maintenance caught up. That's always going to be our answer. Sorry.
Councilman Clark.
I would just say I understand Councilman Hickman's concerns and it is a perception thing. But as we've just heard, we need to maintain our existing infrastructure. And I think our stormwater division needs a win right now, so I fully support allocating that money for the, the camera truck.
Councilmember.
Well, as I said on Thursday at the finance committee, I'm, I'm okay with this. We just need to make it very clear what we're sacrificing. So, you know, I don't know if we need to wrap this truck with a list of all the projects that we're not doing. But I, I mean, I, I agree that it's necessary, but I, I do understand the concern about the public perception of, well, they said they really needed this money and now magically they found it, even though we know that it's not magically that we're sacrificing lots of sidewalks. Basically, lots of sidewalks.
I think you can go back to the, uh.
Postponing a year worth of funding for the Lake Thunderbird TMDO.
You can go back one more, Jane, can you go back one more slide? This is what we're postponing.
Yeah. So I think as long as we make that very, very clear to the public, I, I do think it's a justifiable expense. But I can see, I can see that if we don't let this information not just trickle out, but flow out that we're going to, that we might come up against that when we're looking at future stormwater funding options.
So let me ask you a question I think we'll probably get is, how can you postpone the TMDO? Thought that was a requirement.
So what we're doing right now is we are funding the monitoring. Um, monitoring for this next year has come in under budget and we have some additional funds that we can cover that. So in order to help with the capital situation, we offered up one year, postponing one year of this, which basically means it'll take us a little bit longer to save up the dollars for the structural controls that we're going to need in another two years. So that's.
I thought we were required to do monitoring on TMDO and.
We are required and we have the funds right now to do that. Um, but we're also at the same time following the model that Councilmember Hickman has proposed for capital is we've been budgeting to save up for structural controls that we know will be needed in the next couple of years.
Okay, thanks for clarification. Councilman Holman?
Um, I have a lot of the same concerns that have been expressed. But the reason I do support this particular purchase is I think, I think this camera equipment and truck, I think could actually help get something approved in the future because it will be able to show, you know, actual evidence of what the problems are that we can't show the people right now. We can't show them exactly what these problems are. We can describe them. We can say, this is what it looks like in other cities. But we, we can't say, this is what our brand new stormwater channel in West Lindsay Street that we spent thirty million dollars on is already clogged up and this is what's in there. Um, so I, I'm, to me, this is one of those purchases, I think, it's kind of an investment in getting something passed in the future. Because I think, well, it'll give us evidence to show people. So I'm hoping it works out that way.
I think we did have some pictures of some, you know, that we used. I thought, I thought those were effective. And so I, I think if you give, identify the problem as opposed to doing search and rescue on this.
And if it can, if it can get ahead of some of these problems, so we don't end up with, you know, breaks and stuff like that.
I want you to tell me, once you locate it, how you're going to get to it. I don't, that's not a capital issue. I'm not sure if we've got somebody, Sean's in there with his sliding in there, very small guys that go in there.
There, there are jockeys on the weekend.
Jockeys, okay. Not, not a capital issue, but. Okay, Jane, you have some other?
Okay, so that's going to stay in. And just so you'll know for information on the two sidewalk projects, Angela just told me they're four sixty-four five.
Already under pressure, plus the five hundred thousand.
And we got two seventy-four five on flood and one ninety on Claussen. Okay, so then the rest of that will still remain as is. And so these are amendments. I just want to make sure that you guys are, are good with changing. Then from this slide, we are saying, you have the two sidewalk projects, the HVAC, the I thirty-five corridor study, IT. And then we did say, uh, both of the fire requests and then they temporary fixed for the pickleball. So we'll figure out what that amount is and put that, put that in there. And that's all I've got for changes.
Well, then the plug is Robinson. Whatever's left over.
Earmark.
It's your report, it's the Robinson.
The plug, do you use that in the colloquial way?
I do.
All right.
We use that in, in city budgeting, we use that, that term.
Okay. I had one of my old students call me a plug once. In an endearing sort of way, so.
Wait, plug what?
The plug.
That's like an old horse.
Plug or the plug? Didn't mean it that, didn't mean it that way, minute in the accounting way, uh, this is what takes the balance, whatever that number is. It's a villain number.
My bad.
We prefer to say reserve a fund.
Thank you. I heard it's the plug and I was like, okay.
It's not, it's not dope. It's plug.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I think we're done with capital.
Yes, okay.
Okay, um, so on the operating budget side, the memo that was distributed to you, um, this meeting, I'm just going to go through in some detail. But this is basically a, a summary of everything that has been discussed since the city manager's budget was proposed in the language of, of, uh, budget amendments that council might want to consider. At the finance committee meeting last week, we talked about some areas that were identified that we could come up with the, what amounts to one, one point eight million dollars of savings that council wanted to come up with. Um, since the negative net difference in the general fund would be addressed. So the first one of those is just to reduce, um, overtime allocations, um, throughout the general fund and the public safety sales tax fund. The second. The second one is to reduce a couple of positions that were added in the fiscal year 20 budget that should not have been, these were acting positions that were added last fiscal year that we're in now, that should not have carried over, but they did. So we can do number one and two, that's the language of the amendments that would, that would enact them, but they really wouldn't have any impact on operations. We talked about this in the Finance Committee meeting, so we're, we're suggesting to move forward with that. Number three was talked about at the enterprise budget discussion, reducing basically the fleet replacement program in the sanitation fund, and using the funds basically to pay off the Norman Municipal Authority notes that were issued to pay for the transfer station improvements. So that's number three and four, it would have about a $1 million positive impact on the sanitation fund. Number five will be addressed, that, that number will be plugged in based on what you have just discussed. So the language is, is, is what you see before you, there'll be a number plugged in there, it'll be something like, by my running math, $2.4 million, but the number will be plugged in, and it will enact what you basically talked about related to the capital fund. The C D B G was also addressed in, in Jane's slides, that number will be plugged in, but here's the language of that amendment. Number seven is an amendment that we always propose, basically to correct typos that don't have any financial impact, but we, we always suggest that council make that amendment. Then on number eight, and here's where the, here's where the, the real complicated part comes in, where council directed that the public safety sales tax fund operations and capital be accounted for in the public safety sales tax fund, that will require a lot of gyrations that are, that are discussed down there below. Basically, the, about $9 million of revenue will move from the general fund and the capital fund back to the public safety sales tax fund. The salary expenses of about $9 million will move from the general fund to the public safety sales tax fund. The operational and materials accounts will move from the public safety sales, I mean, from the general fund to the public safety sales tax fund. The capital equipment will move from the capital fund to the public safety sales tax fund. The debt service expenses will move from the capital fund to the public safety sales tax fund. All of those things taken together.
It's, it's not the amendment, sorry.
Yeah, okay, so if you didn't understand, basically, for each of these amendments, the actual amendment language is discussed first, and it's not in bold print. What's in bold print below them is kind of explanations of what the council's action would be. The numbers will change a little bit, but, but, but the concepts will be the same. As we talked about, based on everything that has happened so far in, in the public safety sales tax fund, public safety sales tax fund will have a negative balance of about $1.3 million projected at the end of fiscal year 20. So, based on council's direction, we're making up that negative balance in the public safety sales tax fund with a $941,000 transfer from the general fund and a $300,000 transfer from the capital fund. That number is just based on a 75-25 split between the, the capital fund and the general fund, because, as you'll recall, in the public safety sales tax two ordinance, when the public safety sales tax operations go to the general fund and the capital fund, 3/8% of the revenue goes to the general fund, 1/8% goes to the capital fund, so that's where the 25-75% split comes from. So where we're having to subsidize the public safety sales tax fund, it is based on that 75-25 split.
Okay, question for you.
Yes.
You've got, it says, capital equipment category of $807,000 moved from the capital fund to the P S S T. That does not free up $800,000 in the capital.
That's correct.
Because there's an offsetting transfer, I just want to make that clear, that this is, this is just truing it up, splitting it back out.
Where you're accounting for it, yes.
Is everybody okay with that? Accounting cleanup, plug in.
Cut it.
Plug. You said plug? You said we had to plug it?
I'm good, I'm good, I'm there.
Number nine is the $500,000 for public transportation services notice, and I didn't say cart, because Carter's dead.
What are we going to call it?
We're calling it public, public transportation services.
Okay.
Public transit service.
Number 10.
Hold on, I think, Councilman Clark.
With the public transportation services, so we're increasing, and what was it current, what was that, with?
$635,000 now.
And so.
And this will be on top of that.
And will, will the money we'll get from the F T A come into that? So it looks like we're spending a million, two, or something like that, but do we know how much we're getting from the F T A yet?
To 1.8?
About 2 million.
Okay, so that's not a bad thing, because it's covered.
But that's a flow through, that's why we don't address it.
Yes, it won't be budgeted in the general fund, the general fund is paying this money over to the public transit operation, the public transit operation will also have this federal money coming into it, and some Fairbox revenue and that sort of thing.
Let's make any question.
But on that question, do we have any update from the Embark folks?
We'll be meeting with you next Tuesday, here to give you all those updates, so we're putting all those numbers together.
It's like having to wait for the last episode of Game of Thrones.
It's not even going there.
It's going better.
Only up from here.
Are you equally as check out?
Check with you to see if the president resigned, does that impact Embark? Good.
He never signed anything.
The next few amendments have to do with the.
Right back here to you.
I guess I shouldn't say Embark.
We're out.
The next few amendments have to do with the changes to positions in areas that council had directed and were kind of okay with, because we have not filled those positions and that sort of thing, we can save some money in the general fund. The first one is the accountant that was charged with basically saving sales tax on Norman Municipal Authority projects. Our experience so far has been that staff can absorb that, and we hope that will continue. The second one has to do with the sustainability program, so that is just the reduction of the funding for that position. The third one has to do with the internal audit program, that's two positions. Next, number 13 there, as you know, relates to the Norman Forward Fund for the Senior Citizen Center. $760,000 was appropriated this year, based on 10% of the $7.6 million total cost, that's getting engineering design work underway, we're already, as you know, interviewing candidates for that sort of thing, so that money is, is already appropriated. This amendment would be the fiscal year 20 portion of that, which is basically half of the remainder, so $3.4 million would be appropriated in the fiscal year 20 budget. You would also have an amendment for the $80,000 for the first year's lease payment, and that would be ongoing in the Norman Forward Fund as we go forward. Number 14 came out of the Finance Committee discussion last week, where council wanted to reduce the projected revenues from the excise tax on wastewater new development by about $300,000, and that's kind of what we've been bringing in the last two years or so. And then, number 15 is what Jane was talking about earlier, first related to the capital purchase of equipment for the camera crew, and the second one is for the personnel. So the general fund is about $130,000 for the personnel, the capital fund is about $612,000 for the capital equipment. So that's the amendments that we have heard so far to date, there was a couple of other things that were discussed last week at the Finance Committee meeting, the first one of those being that a plug figure, I'm not going to use that term, but an assumption for service and maintenance savings, at least at this point in time, we have not had to put that in, because we do have a positive net difference projected right now. And the second of those had to do with increasing our projection for interest income revenue. At the Finance Committee, we were looking at fiscal year 19, and how much we were over our projections for fiscal year 19. But Anthony, being the shrewd projector that he is, had actually already done that for fiscal year 20, so that does not require an amendment. Well, it's not a good thing, because, you know, we thought, we thought.
Your skill is a good thing.
So I'd be glad to respond to any questions that you have, the process from here is that we have another public hearing next week at the council meeting, we would certainly entertain any corrections or suggestions that you have, but just recall that the process from here is that any changes that involve any financial changes to the city manager's proposed budget have to be done by an amendment like that. So we would ask that you, you know, say, you know, I want to add on an accountant, just plugging that in. We will, we will give you projections on what that would be, we'll write up the language for you to do the amendment, and then you do the amendment, you consider it, you vote it up or down. But, but this is the process as we go forward, on June the 11th, council will consider the budget as a whole with these amendments that you voted up and down individually, and then you vote on the entire budget on June the 11th.
I would say, I think there's kind of a consensus amongst everybody here, that these are all acceptable amendments, can you, at that, can you give us a revised?
Yes.
The bulk, bulk amendment?
What, what, what the effect of each one of these amendments are, so we can see.
Yeah, and that's the second handout that you have here, is the fund summaries, as they would look with these amendments enacted, the funds that, that have some changes, and then we printed updated fund summaries, obviously, particularly as it relates to the capital fund, there's, there's been some changes based on what you talked about tonight, but as we go forward, we'll update the fund summaries for any other changes that you make, but this is where we stand right now. In the general fund, the important thing is in column D, on line 63, you see that we write it now have a positive net difference of $244,000, so that meets what council mandated to be done, and we hope to at least maintain that, or at least stay within the $778,000 projected 1% emergency reserve expenditure, and that was council's.
So let me ask you a self-service question. In the past seven to 10 years, have we had a budget that's positive?
Yes.
I'm not talking about a $10,000 one, I'm talking about in, in this type.
Yes.
Okay. That was three years ago?
About that.
And how about, so we've had one?
About that.
You're amazing, Robert.
Councilwoman.
So, just clarification, my main goal partly was to, for why we wanted to make cuts this year now, instead of using reserves and putting off some of the pain, was to try, try to help fix this problem that we have every year, knowing, so, is this going, is this helping, is fixing our deficit spending?
This is a step in the right direction.
By $244,000.
Now, if you look at that net difference line on line 63, as we go forward, it turns negative again. So it's not like we don't continue to have a problem, but we have made some steps in the right direction.
And so just to bring everybody, I think everybody was at Finance Committee, there's only a couple people that couldn't make it, we're looking at.
Get my hair done.
Yeah, it looks good. We're looking at some longer-term things, we're going to do a review of all the fees we've, we haven't done a couple years, review all the fees out there for that, and look some expense items to go through, so that was more of a July, August, you know, first quarter, have to kind of revisit the systematic problems going through there, so it's not like this is much faster budget, we don't have to look at it for another six months, it was, it's not going to process, so I think hopefully, finance is kind of, is more work and.
Well, that's what I was wondering too, is how do we prevent the, you know, negative $505,000 next year, and negative 6.4 and.
Yes, Councilmember, Councilmember, as, at the Finance Committee, we, we were discussing that, and basically, what we want to be able to do is make those longer-term decisions on a more thoughtful basis, and once we are out of the hammer of adopting a budget, starting August, starting September, with that list of changes that have been proposed by the departments, and, and what do you really want to do? Do you really want to try this new fee, and what would that entail legally, what would that, would it have to go to voter people? All of those sorts of questions would be considered. What if we really got out of this line of business? Are you acceptable with that? So those are the sorts of things that we want to talk about on, on a longer-term, more thoughtful basis.
And we'll have a better look, number, what the public transportation number is going to be, I mean, we've kind of, we're throwing half a million dollars out there, but once we'll have, be further along on our Embark discussions, we'll have a little better number, just long-term planning, what else? Councilman.
I just want to say, thank you, staff, I thought this was a really productive meeting, I know it took a little bit of time, but that was really helpful for the budget discussion, and thank our finance chair, Robert, and Anthony and his finance team. For me, I'm really happy with the changes you've got here to the general fund, and I intend to fully support it, and I appreciate the hard work it took to get, get to the, the general fund to the point that it's at, to where it's got a couple hundred thousand dollars of, of a balance, positive balance carry for it. I mean, we could propose council professional development leadership training in Hawaii, I think, or someplace, and, you know, work on our teamwork skills, but we might want to save that money for the time being.
Your retreat.
We got to do it after you, before you interview.
Retreat. Camping.
I was thinking that was council going away presence.
Thank you, guys.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.
Miller.